I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is the opioid policy. Mr. St. Peter.
All right. So what we had to do is it actually breaks it down into three separate policies which are all tied together. If you take a look at the packets that we handed out, you know when you're ready. There you go. Now, you'll notice a difference. If you look at the reference number on the MASC website, it would say IHAMB instead of A at the end, because our policies in our manual actually have it indexed as A. IHAMA, okay? And that was the main concern for the policy rebuild or reboot, if you can mind. So if you look down, we'll go over the first one, which is IHAMA, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. You have our original copy on the front, and then if you flip over to the back, it has everything that we want to change it to.
So the one on the front, Jim, is this is the one you're recommending?
This, on the back side, it says the proposed revision. Yes.
Okay.
That's the one we want to change to.
Okay.
Okay? Do you want me to go through this verbatim, or do you want to just take a look at it?
Why don't you just let the audience, and there aren't too many here tonight, but why don't you just let the audience know what the changes are?
Sure. Yeah, all right. So, we start off right away, what we want to try to do is like get our stamp into every policy as well, so anything that says the district, we're adding like SEBRSD into it as well, just so it kind of makes it our own. So, as you can see in the first paragraph, we want to put SEBRSD, "The district shall provide age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate-based drug and alcohol education prevention programs." If you look in the second paragraph, we want to add, on the first line, we want to add drug, alcohol, and tobacco prevention. Basically, and at the end of that, we want to add drug, alcohol, and tobacco use down on the first line there. So basically, what we're trying to do with all this is add drugs, alcohol, and tobacco into one policy, instead of, like as you go through, we're going to be, as the committee goes through and takes a look at some of the other ones, we're going to eliminate the ones that just say tobacco, and just says alcohol, and we're going to combine it into one policy. And if you look at the MASC website, that's basically what they did as well. So it just kind of updates things and makes it a little easier, instead of everybody referencing three or four different policies for one policy, if that makes sense. So as we go down, again, where it says, "The objectives of this program," in that paragraph, where it says district right before it, SEBRSD, and then below that, we want to add, "To prevent, delay, and/or reduce alcohol, tobacco, and drug use among children and youth; to increase students' understanding of legal, social, and health consequences of alcohol, tobacco, and drug use; to teach students self-management skills, social skills, negotiation skills, and refusal skills that will help them to make healthy decisions and avoid alcohol, tobacco, and drug use; the curriculum instructional materials and outcomes used in this program shall be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the school committee." And then, it just goes on with the policy that it shall be posted on the district's website, and notice shall be provided to all students and parents in accordance with state law. Additionally, the district shall file a copy of this policy with DESI in accordance with law in a manner requested by DESI, and that's part of the upgrade, which what we're supposed to be doing, so that's why this has to be pushed through. And then, we're also going to tag and add the sources and legal references and cross references as we should, as we update each policy too, so that's why that's at the bottom. So obviously, the MASC March 2016 was the reference, legal references, MGL 711, 7196, 7137H, and the cross references, this is why we're doing three policies, GBEC, the Drug-Free Workplace Policy, and JIC, the Drug and Alcohol Use by Students Policy. So that's basically updates that one.
Okay.
Do you want to like vote separately, or do you want to?
How did, does the committee, do you want to hear about all the changes, or do you want to vote on them one by one? Does the committee have preference?
We might have to vote on them one by one.
Well, I meant we would after we heard about all of them. All right, does anyone have any questions on this policy, IHAMA, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco? Does anyone have any questions?
Comments?
Comments or concerns about this policy? I'm thinking that the vote should say that it will be replacing, not only will we be approving this policy, but probably in the vote say that it's replacing policy IHAMA, because this will no longer be in existence, correct?
No, it's updating. We're just adding to IHAMA.
Right.
We're updating it.
No, I understand that, but this policy here, it's...
It's the same thing.
Okay.
Right, we're just changing the name, because it just says, I believe in the original IHAMA, it just says like Drug-Free Workplace, or whatever the policy is, but we're changing it to add the drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, all in grouping.
Okay. I just didn't want to see, okay, that's, all right, does anyone else have any questions or concerns?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Jason. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, Mr. St. Peter?
Okay, so, we can go to GBEC, the Drug-Free Workplace. Now, basically, all we did on this one is we added in the upgrade, which was recommended by the MASC website as well, for the positions by federal grants, just to make sure it's updated and upgraded. That was it. So if you look at number nine, 10, 11, and 12, that was what was added on the proposed section. So nine is just make it a requirement that each employee whose employment is funded by a federal grant be given a copy of the statement as required. Number 10, notify the employee in the required statement that as a condition of employment under the grant, the employee will abide by the terms of the statement, and will notify the district of any criminal drug statute conviction for a violation occurring in the workplace no later than five days after such conviction. Eleven, notify the federal agency within 10 days after receiving notice from an employee or otherwise receiving notice of such conviction. And 12, take one of the following actions within 30 days of receiving notice with respect to any employee who is so convicted, take appropriate personal action against such an employee up to and including termination, or require such employee to participate satisfactorily in a drug abuse assistance or rehabilitation program approved for such purposes by a federal, state, or local health law enforcement, or other appropriate agency. And then, of course, on the bottom, we added the sources again, the source for MASC, legal references, the Drug-Free Workplace Act of 1988, and the cross references obviously are IHAMA and JIC again.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions on this policy, GBEC, Drug-Free Workplace?
Missy, did you see that typo in there? Can you? Motion to approve.
Motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, the final one, Jim? I think it's the final one.
Here we go. All right, so it's JIC, the third and final cross reference to the grouping. Our original policy said alcohol used by students, but of course, like I said, we want to just change it, change the title and call it Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Prohibited. And, let me just see here, first one, I want to change a few of the wordings in it, where, because the other one obviously just talked about alcoholic beverages. We're just going to add the groupings in, in that paragraph as well, to change it to the use of alcohol, tobacco products, including vapor e-cigarettes, marijuana steroids, or any controlled substance. And same thing in the other one, let me see, additionally, any students who are... Change the wording to say, "Any student who is under the influence of drugs or alcoholic beverages prior to or during attendance at a participation in a school-sponsored activity" will be barred from the activity and may be subject to disciplinary action, which is almost verbatim, we just changed it a little bit, just note the other exceptions. And then, we added on that this policy shall be posted on the district's website, and notice shall be provided to all students and parents of the policy in accordance with state law. Additionally, the district shall be, shall file a copy of this policy with DESI in accordance with law in a manner requested by DESI, which is also stated in the notice that we got out in March. And then, we obviously have the new sources, which this one didn't have any sources on the bottom, MASC March 2016 update, legal references was MGL 712A, 7196, and 272-40A, and the cross references are IHAMA, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs, and GBEC, the Drug-Free Workplace Policy.
Thank you. All right, does anyone have any questions or concerns on policy JIC, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use Prohibited by Students?
I have one question.
Angela?
How is it distributed to the students? I'm guessing we're to get it in the handbook in the updated form, close to school.
Dr. Crowe, could you possibly answer that for us? How would this information be given out to the students? Is it through the handbook?
Yes, so we have time to get it in there before we print it? Is it, it's not printed yet?
We revise our handbook every year with the school councils, though we have time.
Okay, perfect.
It's a published version, but it has to get adopted every year, so.
And school councils have to be in session.
It starts in October.
So, motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Angela, seconded by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that, these policies, Jim, and the rest of the committee. Missy, you can probably be sure that the principals all do get copies of this new policy, so that they can get the information in the handbooks. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Acceptable Use of Technology Policy. Do we have anything on that tonight?
I still have not been given anything by the Technology Policy Committee.
Were you able to get a hold of Christian?
He is. Because I noticed, and I asked Missy to contact Christian, because I've just been doing too busy, and she, he's going to provide it, so we should have it for the next meeting.
I'll put this on the September agenda.
Fine, well, yeah, I'll definitely make sure that we have that in our policy committee meeting before that happens.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the FMLA policy. Our attorney just sent us this information about an hour ago, so Jim and Missy have scrambled to get it together for us, so if you don't feel comfortable on voting on it tonight, we at least have it in hand if you do feel comfortable. Jim, do you want to explain, do you know anything about this, or have you talked to Dee about it?
Briefly, I don't have my FMLA in front of me, though I didn't get a copy of that one.
I only have the Small Necessities Leave Act. Is that the same thing?
No.
Oh, there's two, it should be an FMLA.
I think I've got the other one.
And an SNLA.
I have an extra.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have it, I have it, Missy.
Right. Yeah, but like I said, me and Dee just talked, and we finally got together a little bit and talked about 5:30 today, so that's when I got the information update, so this is the policy that the legal team approves of and says we should go forward with, so if there's any questions or concerns on it, take our time and...
Do we know any, sorry, Madam Chair, do we know any differences between this policy and what the old policy was?
Off the top, I mean, we just got this, I think maybe we do want to table this also till the next meeting?
Absolutely.
And maybe we could have some highlights as to what the major differences are between what this is and what we currently have.
I'll make sure we have a subcommittee policy meeting real quick, and right before school starts, so.
Okay. So that also will be on the September agenda, excuse me.
And also update Dr. Crowe with whatever we have on here as well, so her input can be added.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, insurance liability questions. We had some concerns before voting on changing our, what was the name of that policy, the Community Use Policy? We were going to try to change the required insurance from 1 to 3 million to 1 to 2 million, but what I understand tonight, our insurance agent was contacted, and he didn't have any problem with this change, so tonight, I guess what we're looking for is to change lowering our insurance liability from 1 to 3 million to 1 to 2 million, that, I don't think I'm wording that correctly. It would require organizations using our facilities to provide the district with an insurance binder of 1 to 2 million, rather than the original 1 to 3. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on that?
No, the one that did wasn't, isn't here tonight, so.
What's that?
The one that did isn't here tonight, so she didn't get to get the answer.
Well, I think she just wanted to be sure that our insurance agent was on board with it, and evidently, he is fine. So do I have a motion to approve?
Well, we do that, we have to, there's another one that was added to that also, for the, number 36 was added, a liability waiver may be obtained, but for any group, we wanted to discuss that as well.
Sure, do you want to explain that?
Sure.
Because I, we just got this tonight, so I'm really not that familiar with it.
The subcommittee also wanted to make sure that there was a waiver available on this portion of it, and there was a question of if we could do a waiver or not, and according to Dee, it is okay to do one, and me and Gary got together earlier and discussed some of it. You spoke, you heard back from the insurance company, correct?
Right, yep.
And?
Ben? So what they suggested is, in cases like that, where they're just going to congregate in our parking lot, use it to, you know, for a parade, or leave to go someplace else, that all they have to do is, all these organizations must have some sort of insurance coverage anyway, that they can name the district as an additional insured, so it really doesn't, it's not like any kind of additional coverage for them, and just get us a copy of that. It's, I don't think it costs them anything to get that, and that's fine.
Okay. So how would you want the wording of that recommendation to be? It would include changing from 1 to 3 million to 1 to 2, and as far as the waiver, I want to make sure the wording is correct.
I think, I think Jim has some wording that he got.
Yeah, but number 36, we said, "A liability waiver may be obtained for any group, club or organization wishing to congregate in the parking lot or athletic field before or after a function or charity," which is on that portion. And the copy that I gave you, is the rest of it, is almost verbatim to what the legal team recommended, and then some. So, and what I did is Angela actually handed me some insurance stuff that she dug into for me, and policies from other schools, and this one actually goes word for word, almost, for what the legal team said is recommended. So that's the policy that you have in front of you, the insurance and related part of it. So if you wanted to do a waiver, that would be what we would recommend on that. Would you like me to read that all too, or would you all just like to like go over it and have any questions or concerns?
Well, again, I just want to be sure the motion, this is important, so I want to be sure that the motion reads correctly, so if someone wants to make a motion, as I said before, to change what we require organizations to have to use our facilities with an insurance binder from 1 to 2 million.
Will it use, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Martha.
That's okay. And, this is the part again, that I just want to be sure the wording is correct on the waivers. I know you keep referring to number 36, but I don't have that.
That's on, that's on our policy? So that was in the last, the last meeting?
Yes.
You can get that over to your mouth.
That's why it's so helpful if we have these, I know it's no one's fault, but it'd be very helpful if we had this, you know, ahead of time, so that we can have our motion.
Well, it's the one we had at the last week's meeting. It's the one that we were handed last week.
Facility use one?
Oh, okay, but I mean, for the, but we're not going to have that whole thing in the motion.
Well, no, it's just the amendment to the, to the facility use policy, so I, like, so I will make a motion that we approve the amendments to the facility use policy, and attach the waiver for signatures for those groups that qualify to use it.
Do you feel that would cover it, Gary?
Yeah, yeah, the waiver for groups that are not going to have access to the buildings, so they're pretty much just on the grounds, just for a short period of time, so I think that's sufficient.
That would be sufficient. All right, is there a second on the recommendation?
A second.
Second by Jason. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, fundraising requests. I understand that we don't have any tonight, I'm sure we'll probably have some at the September meeting. So we're moving on to the awarding of bid for 2017, 2020 transportation.
Could I just pass something through you?
Yes.
I'm the damn chair for the fundraiser request. I have been asked by a few people that are doing fundraisers, and this is more of a question geared for Gary, they've been asking me about the money and how you want them to go about handling the money, so I don't know if you get any answer for them. I wasn't totally positive what to tell them, so I didn't want to give them something that I didn't know anything about, so.
I guess, it depends on when the fundraiser is, so first of all, they'd have to have permission from the committee to hold a fundraiser, and then, like, the cheerleaders, the high school cheerleaders had a fundraiser, it was on a Saturday, so we had them, I met them there, I got, they counted the money, I verified the money, I brought it back to the administration building, and we locked it up. So what we don't want them to do is bring it home. So if it's during the week, and they can give it to the principal, the principal can lock it up overnight, and then the next day, the principal can bring it over to the treasurer, and then he can deposit it, put it in the safe, so if it's on a weekend, it poses a different problem, but we can get around that.
Yeah, it was, it was for the fundraiser they're having at Clem's, for the vegetables there and stuff.
Oh, yeah, so that was similar to the cheerleader.
That was approved, so.
Yep.
She was just asking me, and I told her I'd speak with you, so.
And I would say that probably anyone who wants to do a fundraiser, obviously, is going to contact the principal of their school, and they should be able to guide them as well. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So, with respect to the vegetables, she has contacted me via email, and we will get in touch that weekend, so that I can go and collect it and put it in our vault.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Place, how about? Not my home.
Okay, the next item is the awarding of bid for the 2017, 2020 transportation. Mr. Suter?
Thank you. So I handed out a package tonight, what that is comprised of is the top sheet is the proposed contract for regular, regular ed transportation, and again, it's with AA Transportation who's been, who had the contract for the last three years. They were the only bidder when we went out this time. The second page of that is a contract for the athletic and field trip portion of the transportation bid. It's pretty much the same wording, except for the fact that it says athletic and field trips. And then, I didn't attach the entire bid, I have it here if anybody wants to see it, the specifications we put out, but I did give you the bid sheets that they submitted, which is what it's going to cost us, so you can see for the year that's coming up, 2016, 2017, the cost per bus is $356 per day, it totals out to $1,025,200 for regular ed transportation, and $109,625 for athletics and field trips, and again, that's $101,000 higher than what we had in the last year's budget, and that's about an 11% increase. And if we go to the second bid sheet, it's for the second year of the contract, which is school year 2017, 2018, similar type thing, they quote the cost per bus per day, per route, that's totals $1,065,600, that's an increase of $40,400, and that's a 3.8% increase over what we'll pay in the upcoming year, and it's a similar, similar increase in athletic and field trips. And then, the last year of the contract is 2018, 2019, the total estimated cost, or the actual, it would be the actual cost, is $1,105,920, that's about a $40,320 increase, and that's about a 3.9% increase over the second year of the contract. So without having multiple bidders, it puts us in a bad position, there's not too much competition, but...
Are there many other bus companies out there?
We did have interest from McCarthy in Brookfield, but they didn't bid, they didn't submit a bid, and we had one other, one other interest from a Rhode Island company, and I know this first student, I think, is in Worcester, but they didn't bid either, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Suter on?
I do.
Angela?
One, did they give any explanation as to why the, I mean, that's a huge increase with gas prices down, and I just, I mean, I get it should go up, I do get that, people get raises, things happen, and you don't know, the gas prices could go up in six months, but did they give any kind of like, did they just basically say, "Sorry, you're over a barrel, ha ha," or?
No, but what they did explain is they have to buy a certain number of new buses, because in the, in the specifications, we require that the buses be 2015 models or later, or newer. So they'll have to, you know, get rid of some of their older models and buy new ones, so they claim that, you know, the buses aren't cheap, $150,000 apiece, and that contributes to part of the cost of the increase, but other than that, no, they didn't really give us an explanation.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, so we're looking for a motion to award the 2017, 2020 transportation bid to AA Transportation as bid.
So moved.
Motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, cafeteria substitute pay scale. Mrs. Sunquist is here to explain, would you like to come up and explain what you're recommending?
Basically, any sub that works 30 days or more, I would like them to get a little bit of a boost in 30 days or more. I would like them to get a little bit of a boost and go up to $10 an hour. It's not 10, it's not 30 consecutive days, it's just 30 days. I mean, it could take them six months to do 30 days. Sometimes, we go a month or two without having any subs, but by then, by 30 days, they'll get the experience, and we'll know whether or not they can handle working in the kitchen, because it's, it's not an easy, easy sub.
And the way you described it last week was because we need to be more competitive with other places that are hiring?
Yeah, we can't, we can't get, we have two subs right now, and one of them said, you know, and she's like, one of our best subs we have, and she's like, you know what, for $8.50, I may not be able to stay. So it's really hard. We don't have to give them, I know.
Yep, yep, through the chair. My only question is, I, isn't minimum wage already $10 an hour?
I don't, we don't have to follow that.
Don't have to follow minimum wage, okay.
Because we're a school.
Okay.
Is it, is it already? I thought it was.
Yeah, it got changed in January.
Oh, okay. And it's going to change again.
It's going to change again. Next January will be 11.
So we're falling farther and further behind.
Right, I mean, $8.50 is kind of shameful, I think. As working in the kitchen, I, you know, I, I don't know if any of you guys have ever been into the cafeterias, but, I mean, they run their tails off.
I'll tell you, I did, I did a fundraiser in Runo Robbins kitchens once, and we almost weren't friends after it, because it's hard work, and she's a taskmaster, so I, it's, I can't believe that we can get people that have been working for that much.
Right. I think they deserve it.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions of Robin?
I have one question. The pay for that comes out of the school food service program, correct?
Yes.
So that's not a part of our budget, doesn't affect us at all, really?
Oh, this comes strictly.
It affects you and your bottom line.
The reimbursements and the, and the lunch money we get from the kids, that's where it comes from.
And you, and you don't find, think you'll have a problem with that increase at all?
No, absolutely not.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. I think that's something we prob- I think that's something we probably, down the road, are gonna have to talk about, too, is substitute pays for other areas, you know, when you figure out what some of these people are making an hour, it's pretty sad, so, something for the future. Um, I think that was the last item, does anyone else have any business that they would like to bring to our attention tonight, or?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I?
Sure.
Yeah, just one quick thing, that Saturday is going on, the Volunteer Day, starts at seven o'clock in the morning, um, for anybody interested, so, just throwing that out there.
Right, for anyone who didn't watch, uh, the meeting last week, we will be having a volunteer day on the, um, high school fields to try to get our fields in good shape, with, we thank Mr. Russ K. Calstrm for working with us to get this going and being cooperative with Jason, and we're hoping, um, that we get a lot of people to show some community spirit and work together, which is what we're all aiming for, for this school district, and get a good project done, so, if anybody can make it, we'd appreciate it, and that's about it, so, motion, yes.
Motion, please, sorry. Was there any, um, more information about the Facebook page that we may, might be doing? Or was that the...
Head Mike. It's not on the agenda tonight, but he can give us a brief update, we won't be voting on anything.
Um, I made a phone call to a gentleman at MASC, and he, he, he told me that if we were gonna do it as a board, it would have to be run by the chair, but he suggested, he, he, he said in, in the past, it didn't work out so well as a board, because the chair usually turns over once a year, and one chair might not be as interested as the previous, but his suggestion was, and he, was to look into a district Facebook page, so, I was thinking we could get this, if the September agenda's not too big, we could get it on the September agenda to talk about a district, yeah, uh, social media sites, and through the technology integration specialist, have her be involved in it, that would be, that was his one suggestion, the other suggestion was to get information out through the PTA and parent group, social media pages.
Okay, we will put that for further discussion on the September agenda. Okay, if there's nothing else tonight, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Angela?
Second.
Seconded by Wendy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you for coming, everyone.